The next special meeting workshop with Henry Delosier is scheduled for Friday, May 5, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant, Sebring, Florida. Next regular meeting is Friday, May 12, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center in Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cellphones. I guess we can start. I don't know who's gonna do what first.
I'd just like to introduce our guests. You've met Cliff Scholz of CMSA Architecture and Dan Sasson is with CMSA also. And we have CJ Fishman, which is our kitchen consultant extraordinaire, actually. Your reputation precedes CJ. And if you'd like to take the floor, Cliff, and run us through your agenda?
Sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
The agenda I sent over was an outline, but it, I think, will serve its purpose to get us going on our project here. The, one of the first thing was any of team members that were unselected this time. I didn't know if there's gonna be landscape architects involved or interior designers. Generally, what happens in that regard is we will get our work going and our design work and get it back to you and work with you to review it. And once we get on a path that we think is a good path, we feel like the design works, the flow works, the budget works, then we'll usually, at that time, get an interior designer involved if we need them. The landscape architecture part of it, especially in golf clubhouses, generally doesn't happen too much because the golf club itself usually has the wherewithal to do any work that would be around the perimeter of the building with regard to landscaping. So that was, and the response was that Kelly Griffin is a local designer who you've worked with in the past. And I think when the time's appropriate, we'll let you know and then we can meet with her or whomever you feel that you might want to work with. We can also recommend interior designers, you know, from mostly the Sarasota area, also Vera Beach, Naples, areas that we work in. So the first item was just to try and get the team pulled together and see if there's anything we need to do now to get our team moving forward. The second item was to re-review the club facilities, your existing layout, and generally, really, to get CJ up to speed on actually walking through the club, which we've done this morning. You know, the assessment of what you've got is something that we can do. The assessment of what you need is a combination of our help with your people, your chef, your general manager, the, anybody who's involved in the food service end of the club. And then, you know, establish the overall general goals that you have for the clubhouse. And this is, you know, we like to think in a five, 10, 20, or even longer year period of time. You know, a lot of clubs will have immediate goals that they want to satisfy very quickly. Some just want to get ready for the next 20 years. And we take a look at that, both in solving immediate problems you might have, but also thinking into the future as far as, you know, where do you want to be in 20 years as far as your club facility and food service operation in the community. I understand it right now that you're more or less not the only game in town, but one of the leaders with regard to the potential for banquets, weddings, and things like that, which we've seen as a nice income stream for clubs that we've worked on. But you have to be very careful with that, that the members or the regulars that are there don't feel like they've been pushed aside. And we've been very successful in the past on accomplishing both of those goals. You know, there's some numbers in here about the number of people and so forth, and those are things that we will take, obviously, into consideration in doing our layout. You know, our goals in what we're doing is to first ascertain what it is that the club wants and what we think it needs, and then come to you with a presentation that shows what's existing and what we propose to do. At that point, if available, it's nice to get a contractor involved for some preliminary pricing before we get into construction drawings. But we move forward. We'll tell you what we think it's gonna cost. I'm also a licensed general contractor, as well as an architect. I don't practice the general contracting on a regular basis, but we're pretty good at putting some numbers together as far as what we think it's gonna cost. At that point, if we feel that we have a good program, a good design, and a good budget, then we'll move into construction drawings, which are the contract documents that'll be used for permit, pricing, and actually, building. And that's when the hard pricing comes in from the contractor. After that, we look at the numbers when they come back. If they're agreeable, then contracts are signed and construction actually starts. So what we're doing, we're at the very beginning of what we do now, and that's to ascertain exactly what you have and what your wants and needs and desires are for the club. You know, some of the, establish the programs in need of priority. That's existing drawings which we have, and I believe we're gonna want to probably go back through the club again after this meeting, just to take a little more in-depth look at it. But what we're looking for, really, is input as to, which I think you've given us in writing there, as to how many people and how you want the facility to operate, which is really three different ways, in its entirety or split, with a banquet facility and the members, or just a total banquet facility on its own. The pro shop, when we went through it before, apparently, the floor space is adequate for where it is, although there's a need for one more office, sort of a secure office that somebody can do some of the accounting procedures and not be out in the middle of everybody. And then the phasing options, timing, and one thing we always find very interesting is, you know, is the club gonna stay in operation while the work is being done? Well, the answer to that 99% of the time is yes. So we look at, you know, what are your downtimes? And then we can start to plan for what we need to do so that we can start actual construction at the appropriate time. And it's important for us to know or discuss how the club will stay in operation. Generally, it can't stay in full operation with regard to food facilities, and some temporary measures are usually done to accommodate that. We found in the past that on all the clubs we've done renovation work to, and they remained open at the same time, the members, the players, everybody involved, is usually very understanding. You know, you're trying to improve the club, and as long as you take care of them to some extent, it usually works out. And then the last, or second to last thing, is actually establishing a budget, you know, for what the goals are and a complete budget. And that would be, you know, to give us the number that we can work towards. And this is something that evolves, but we need a starting point as to, you know, are we talking $100,000? Are we talking $2 million? You know, there's a big gap there, and it helps if we can get an idea of where our parameters are. And we can help you with that with regard to the building construction, your furniture fixtures and equipment, as well as the kitchen equipment. And then timing is our last thing, and that's, you know, we just need some input from you as to what your goal is as far as timing, to have this started and/or finished. But I think that's the early agenda items that I had on the list.
Thank you, Cliff. I would say we could start. CJ, would you like to just give us your first, you know, today was the first time you were in, in the kitchen. You know, our total revenue for food and beverage is about 1.3 million, so it gives you kind of an idea, you know, of the busyness. You know, definitely, our most busy time at the club is Saturday nights, where we have, you know, a number of member plays. So from November through March, generally have 150 people, a full shotgun coming in on the a la carte side, which we stagger. We, so it's 75 people and 75 people a half an hour apart. And then that's blended with a banquet on the other side, which we try not to have those happen at exactly the same times, but since there's a little bit of a window, you know, probably a one hour to an hour and a half window for the a la carte side, there's always gonna be some overlapping. So if you could, I guess, just, I think, when, at the end, we can reconvene and go back there and specifically look at it, but just get your impressions of where you looked at the flow and the general facility with our, I believe our goal is to be able to handle both of those at one time safely with what you would call normal a la carte times for someone who expects to come in and sit down, you know, and order a hamburger for their table and get it in a, you know, reasonable time.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Jim. Well, this was my first walk-through through your kitchen. I would definitely keep your chef, because I've seen a lot of kitchens over my time, and God willing, we'll see a lot more, but this is about the smallest kitchen I've seen trying to do, and I don't say that disparagingly, because you do have some good equipment in there, but it takes a lot of talent to be able to run a banquet or a wedding for 150 people and still be able to serve your members or your guests a la carte style, even if it takes them 45 minutes to an hour to get a meal when you're doing the banquets, because your kitchen's just, was never designed to do that. And in fairness, whoever designed the kitchen in the beginning, the programming was totally different, I'm sure, as it is today, and that was set up to be more of a grill operation, hamburgers, hot dogs, sandwiches, I don't have to go into, but on a very small scale. It's really never set up to do any banquets or anything like that. Now, you've evolved to that. The beauty of the building itself is it's there. The kitchen is totally antiquated and it's small. It's way too small. You don't have, there's no flow to the kitchen, so it's virtually impossible, even though the chef is doing it, to produce the kind of level that he can produce with the right-sized kitchen. Kitchens are designed based on menus and based on type of operation and based on flow. So the less cross-traffic, minimum amount of steps, and I'm talking about the kitchen personnel from servers to cooks to dishwasher to prep, to banquet prep. It's all, it's all about the flow and it's all about the minimum amount of steps and no cross-traffic. What you have now is total cross-traffic, no real flow. By the way, I'm a very positive mental attitude person, so I'll give you all the positives coming in a second, okay? But that's the challenge that you face, and it will not get better. It will only get worse. You've added some pieces of equipment to try to make the chef's life easier in the sense of additional walk-in cooler space and refrigeration space, which is good, but you just really lack a lot of preparation space. You lack a lot of pantry space. There's no cold pantry area. There's no, the one hotline, you don't have, there's no way to really prepare ahead of time for banquets. So those are the challenges. The positive is, here I come with the positive, the positive is you have space to achieve that. This is just my initial walkthrough, and we really haven't had time yet to program it with the chef and all the other team members, but my initial walkthrough is looking at some of the back storage areas when you go out where the receiving door is, and back in the back where you've got the shed back there and the delivery entrance. If you were good to go back, and we open up some of that area, and which, I don't think those walls are structural, so we can pretty much open that area up and basically change the whole kitchen flow to be able to flow banquets out through banquet area and flow a la carte to the bar area and the dining room over there without any cross-traffic. So, and that's, but the only way to do that is to extend the space of the kitchen toward the back. And there's room to do that. There may be a little bit of infrastructure, which we've always faced that. We might have to relocate those grease, well, we would relocate those grease traps that are in the ground, because they're right in our way. And if they weren't, it would've been a miracle, so we're used to doing that. But by doing that, we can go back pretty much to where the hot water heater is in that back area, change the access to that, and then really extend that kitchen all the way back. What that would do, then, gives me more of a rectangular space, and rectangular space in a kitchen is very positive. And we would change the whole direction of the kitchen. Wouldn't be, the hood wouldn't be on that back wall, and it would be more of an island-style hood, and the back line would be, and I don't wanna get into all the minutia, but just to give you guys a flow, you would have an a la carte hotline on the front, a banquet prep line and prep in the back, and you would have a cold pantry also off of that, so you could be doing banquet prep, still be serving your members, still be doing the banquet at the same time, which is exactly what you all want to achieve. Country Club Food Service is not a restaurant, okay? Because here, here's how it works. Your members come in, forget the banquets for a second, and they all come in and they all hit the bar basically at the same time, okay? And they have their drinks, and about 7 o'clock or whenever it is, everybody wants to sit down, and they want to be served within 20, 25 minutes, 30 minutes, and have a dining experience. Your kitchen just can't put that food out and still do the banquets in that kind of deal, even with a limited venue. So the key is to be able to accomplish the banquet business and the a la carte business and both parties totally satisfied. The banquet business, if the kitchen is right, will be tremendous ROI, return on your investment, because you know your costs are fixed. It's easy for the chef to prepare for it. He knows his food costs. He knows his labor costs. It's not like he has to guess how many people are coming in. So that's, for Country Club Food Service or Club Food Service, banquet business is great, and I encourage you to do that. And I really believe you can run it out of one kitchen. We just need to expand the kitchen. That's my initial observation.
So are there any questions or comments at this point with going through Cliff's original agenda? Are there suggestions that we're looking at? I know today at our staff meeting, it was brought up to possibly look at a separate banquet facility slash community center, to consider that. Is that, is that something that's on the table? It was just new for me today to hear?
Actually, oh, go ahead.
I've never heard of it.
Well, I guess, I had thought of that, thinking that, you know, to your point about going 15, 20 years out, you know, we have some issues here right now in terms of this community center. Needs to be redone, reworked. We have storage issues with the community, or the swimming pool area. We have a very small fitness center, so this building could be retrofitted to take care of those issues, as well as create smaller meeting rooms. So if you take this building, which is roughly 6,600 square feet, it's about 110 by 60 feet, and duplicate something like that, similar to that, next to the clubhouse, and not join, but separately, I think we could create even more ROI for the district by doing that, and it solves a lot of problems. First of all, we take care of the problem here as far as needing more space here, and also, if the kitchen can do it, if the kitchen could crank out banquet meals for two banquets at the same time, now you've increased your ability, increased your income. I don't know if that's doable or not, but if, right now, if it can crank out 275 meals, can it crank out another 200 meals? And where I get to 200 is the Fire Marshal code on this building is 200 people. So if we have a building similar size over there next to the clubhouse, facing the lake, I think a great, a great venue for everybody. And I wrote some notes down here. First of all, I think we'd have dual events, number one. We would update this community center to a new community center. It would create more office space, which is another issue that we have at the current clubhouse. I mean, you could have, this whole wall here could be nothing but offices and food storage for Kevin, so, which would create more kitchen area for your design by taking the pantry out of there. I think would create more restaurant revenue. We'd increase special events. We'd increase our fitness center. We could create smaller venues in this building by having smaller, like last night, we had a HOA meeting here. There's 30 people here, took up the whole building. There was another group waiting to come in. You could easily, if this room were divided up into smaller venues, that you could have two or three meetings going on at the same time, so. I don't know. I just think that would, should be a long-range vision for this whole project. So if we're gonna invest in this kitchen, why don't we invest in this kitchen for the long haul, where we can have two events going on at the same time? We can double our wedding exposures, which is another nice revenue stream for us as well, and also still have the a la carte business going on. So that's kind of my thought in terms of vision, if you will. Instead of thinking short-term vision, think a little longer-term vision of 10 to 15 years. And we're certainly gonna need that as our community grows, as our business grows. We're becoming a dominant force in this community, and for us to try to slow that down would be foolish in my mind, so. And this would be just a nice giant step forward in offering this community the best possible event menu that, or venue that you can do, so that's kind of my thoughts on it.
Okay, now, I see now where it came from, but no, I don't know if anybody else has heard of that, but this specific meeting was started when I initially asked, excuse me, for a kitchen expansion, and that's what I'm here for. I'm not here, I mean, his idea is probably pretty good, but I'm not, I'm not here for that. I'm here for a kitchen expansion, and I want to hear about it. I'd love what you had to say, and it's, and it sounds good for Kevin. I mean, it just so Kevin wants it, but my initial thoughts is a kitchen expansion. But that's just me, but.
I guess my reason, my, I don't have any problem with expand, doing this project. I don't have a problem with it, but if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Let's, you know, we've learned our lesson on the tennis courts, that we were gonna do just a little bit, and our $200,000 project costs us $600,000. So, in our mainest building, the original plan was to spend a half a million to fix that up. We're now, we're gonna spend one and a half million to do it right. So that's kind of where my thinking is. If we're gonna do this, let's do it right the first time, instead of piecemealing it, where these guys have to come back five years later and say, okay, now we're gonna expand it again. Now we're gonna do this. Why don't we just think along the lines of doing it now? Whether it's cost prohibitive, I have no idea, but I just, I just think we'd be better off thinking long-term versus short-term.
Paul, your Mark?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few comments. When we started the thoughts on this expansion of the kitchen, there were other thoughts brought up by members of the club. One that keeps getting, being brought up by the members that keeps getting buried, which I want to bring up again, and not, from this point on, it won't be buried. I want to put it on the record, is closing in the deck area, the porch area around, outside there. That, all that needs to be done is just taking the screens down and putting up windows of some sort, something to put that in so we can use that, make it a usable space. That keeps getting buried. I don't want it buried anymore. I want them to be considered, okay? Whatever we do. I don't know who it is, but that's one of these things around here that just, if they don't like it, they bury it. Yes, I think the, can that office area, of course, Kurt had a good idea there about the office areas. I think that's gonna expand too. I think there's one, one office space for this one person. It's needed. There's no doubt about that. It's needed, but maybe we ought to think also of a couple offices or three offices, so for like, in the expansion you're talking about, if we go to that room, make sure there's some offices in there.
Well, I'm thinking there's room for offices, there's room for a pantry for him. You would build in a, not a prep kitchen, but a serving kitchen, where all the food is prepped in the main kitchen and then is taken over to the other building and served, so. So yeah, there would be a lot of things going on in that building versus just a big vacant room, but.
Yeah. Well, the other thing I think we should take a real look at is the bar area. First of all, that, from building federal courthouse, is I can tell you, the first thing I'm gonna be looking at is the safety. And when you look at that bar and you're from the end of the horseshoe, you look at one on the right-hand side, if something would explode there, those people are gonna die. There's no outlet. They have to go through the windows to get out there. So there's no space over there on that side. Something's gotta be discussed about that. Whether the bar needs turned, something, but more space needs, whether we open it up to the outside or something, but that bar was a poor decision to begin with, not having a bar. I'm all in favor of a bar. I want to get out of it alive, stumbling or crawling, I want to get out of there. So I think that ought to be considered, something in there. And then, storage area for the bar. I understand that when the people from the bar, the bartender, need some things, I don't know what it, what they are, they gotta leave that area and go somewhere else to get it. Is that true, Jim? Like beer or kegs or equipment or something like that?
Yeah. Specifically, the alcohol and a lot of the syrups and things are actually stored at the end of the cart barn, and then there's a, there's a keg cooler in back, which, that is an abnormal.
Yeah.
The keg cooler access, you know, might be a few more steps than you would like, but comparing that to the alcohol storage, the alcohol storage is definitely a difficulty.
Yeah. Well, maybe something when we're working on that bar, that you could get a storage area over, on that side over there, even if it expanded the porch coming up through there, just to give these guys a chance to step out here and get what they need and step back into the bar. I know from being a bartender, you leave that bar, it causes all kinds of problems when you're the bartender. And so these people need some type of storage area right there, and I don't know how you get it, but you got that porch coming up through there. Maybe it could be extended and then a door out to it from the bar area to help them. But they need space, storage space. But I really think, if you take a real good look, if you go back over, Cliff, if you would take a good look at that bar and go over and sit on that other side, see how crowded it is, you just don't have any space on that right-hand side of that bar as you're facing from the end of the horseshoe, okay? Get back up there. That's, that's just not the right way to do it. I mean, it's.
When CJ and I were walking through, and Dan were walking through earlier, you know, the bar, it's a nice bar. I mean, it's, a lot of seats to it, but we, there's something about it that's not right.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's the shape. It's a long bar, which is tough on bartenders. The storage is just not there, you know, and something needs to happen in that area. And I think enclosing the porch is going to give us a good opportunity to solve that problem.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't want to put a storage area with the best view of the lake. I'm not gonna do that, but I think internally, it'll give us an opportunity to maybe reshape the bar, you know, and get some storage there. I'm assuming the enclosed porch area is to get all year-round usage out of that conditioned space, and I'm assuming that also, in doing that, we would expand outside with some outdoor seating as well, whether it was covered or umbrellas or whatever it would be, but I think, I wouldn't want to see it give up that porch feel for people that, you know, during season do want to be outside.
We think the same, I got it down here coming up. That was my idea too, was to, once you enclose that area, to be able to step out through a couple doors, you know, just not that one that's there, a couple of them, to step out on a large deck area, because I think Kurt mentioned it, that lake's out there, and that lake is beautiful, but we need to get out there, and however you do it, whether you put a top on it, which is probably a smart idea, but if it's just the tables and the large umbrellas, however you want to do it, although those things down here aren't very viable, because the wind blows so hard down there. But if it was just open.
Well, I'd like to see actually the, what the edge of the porch, the outside edge now. now, that instead of just windows, I would put like high-folding French doors or something so that when the weather is right, you can open that whole thing up and have indoor-outdoor, but during the summer, when it's hot, you shut it.
Yeah. Well, my idea was, is to have almost floor-deceiving windows that would slide, and there'd be tempered glass, because the sun sets right over the eighteen greens where you get your sun from, okay, you have an evening, and to have that sliding there, and then when you, so then open head screen, and slide back, so every other one of them could be open for that air and so forth, but it'd be easy pickup, you know, to close them, lock them. I dispelled a room on my house and used them, they worked perfect, easy, perfect.
That's great, and you'd gain indoor seating.
Absolutely. And then, like you said, we'd have a large deck out there. There could be a lot of things happening on that deck, but I'd want to keep it on the same level as the floor. Down here, you know, when you use steps, keep it on the same, same level, so people could go out there and eat outside and look at the lake. That's, I don't see that as a tremendously expensive deal to build that deck.
Well.
Of course, I'm talking about size and things like that, that makes the differential.
It's always more than a lot of the day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand.
It's a good idea. It's not out of luck, you know, as far as the impact or something like that, it's something definitely, I think, could be in the long run.
Mark or Larry, or are you done?
Yes, because I'm starting to finish.
You can come back.
Okay.
Mark or Larry?
No, I, I guess I, a little, some mixed emotions here. I, I agree with what Wally and Kurt said, to look towards the future. I'm a believer in planning, looking beyond four or five years out, because all too often that's what's happened here, although I've only been down in Sebring for a short period of time. I have seen what they refer to as a lot of do-overs, a lot of work, they say, gee, why didn't we think this through a little better, and therefore we could have saved ourselves some money in the long run. I also look at this as initially, this project started as a, pretty much what Mike said, a kitchen renovation to accommodate the existing, and I say the existing clientele. I'm not so sure that I've ever seen any numbers come in that would warrant an additional banquet room, although I think it would be great. I'm kind of a numbers person. You show me where the business is, where I'm going to derive the business from, and you can kind of convince me to go in another direction. But if you can't show me where that revenue is going to come from, or what past revenues are even exactly, then I'm a little bit skeptical. I don't, I, I think that it's nice to have great ideas, you know, everybody has champagne taste and sometimes beer pockets, and I just want to make sure that this doesn't end up being exactly what Kurt said, it starts out as a projected $500,000 project, and I'm just throwing a number out there. And then, six months from now, we're getting everything we want, but it's a $2 million project, and so that's my concern. I just, I don't want it to get too great, too grand for a short time. I think the other side of it is, we should look at planning so that maybe at a second phase of this, we could add some of that office in, the offices in. So structurally, if we looked at these things, it would be helpful. What, the outside enclosure has been discussed quite a bit, and at multiple types of meetings, both, you know, there's other golf committees and things of that nature, and the belief there was, it wasn't going to be a huge expense, but yet that doesn't seem to be part of this piece.
It's not even in here.
It's, it's not even in here, so.
Question.
If somebody's gonna have to come back to me and show me how we're gonna recoup revenue and why we need some of these larger facilities if we went that way.
If I may, I've already, the first time I was here and saw your club, I, I looked at the area outside of where the banquet room is now, on the east side of it, and in my mind, I thought, you know, I am gonna keep in mind that this might expand out in this area for another banquet facility. I, I think we'd be remiss if we weren't thinking about that and brought it up and discussed it. You know, the, the questions that come to my mind is labor cost and actual just cost. When you separate a building, you know, all of a sudden it just changes the connection and how it operates, the number of people that it takes to operate it and everything else. You know, to me, I would look at the kitchen, getting the kitchen for what we projected and the information we've gotten now, but also leave some additional space and a design that shows possibly additional food service equipment or space to work or whatever it is, if you wanted to add another banquet room. I think it's, it's cheap space, if you don't fill it up, it'll get filled up with something, but, you know, it's an opportunity that fifteen years from now, if you realize, or a year from now, if you realize that, hey, we really do want to do more banquets, it does make fiscal sense, then let's have it as part of the design. You don't have to build it now, but it could be, I would look at it as though it is a future phase, but I would do everything in our design that we're doing now to accommodate that phase.
Yeah, are you talking about prepping, like utilities and so forth, have everything right out of there?
Exactly.
And I totally agree, and I, I totally agree with that aspect of it. I'm just saying, to do everything maybe at once, and I'm, I'm not saying that's out of the realm of reality, I'm just saying, you know, be prepared, put all of the infrastructure there so that if you wanted to expand, you have it and you don't have to now all of a sudden start knocking walls out and things of that nature, that's all I'm saying.
As an example, I don't want to relocate the grease traps twice.
Correct, exactly.
Right, that's, that's one of the things we look at.
The other thing is, and I should have mentioned this to you, when I look at doing a kitchen for Sunland Lake or anywhere, minimum I look twenty-five years. I look twenty-five years down the road, that you may change equipment in that twenty-five year period of time, but you won't need to change the flow to accommodate what you're doing now. Now, by going to this investment that you're gonna make, once we establish a budget, which we're gonna need a budget, like Cliff said, but if we create the banquet, the separate banquet line, meaning the prep for banquets, the banquet cooking line, and we create that and we create the area, when we create that, we will create that so that if down the road, like you said, Kurt, you want to build another building, you're gonna have to have some type of holding kitchen in that building, and we would then, all you would need to do would be able, would be, you would have to purchase some banquet transport equipment. You already have some, by the way, but you'd have to, depending how far you're gonna move the equipment, and then you would hold that in that new banquet facility kitchen, but the actual production and the preparation for two halls, the existing and the new, if you should ever build it in fifteen years or ten years or whatever, if, we would lay that kitchen out that you'd still be able to do them both. Not gonna say it will be as easy, but you would be able to do it, compared to what the chef is doing now, it'd be a lot easier. So I'm not concerned about that, because I plan for those kinds of things, excuse me, but I think it's better to plan, just like you said, upfront, you're still gonna get that return on investment based on the current hall anyway, so everything else, if you decided to do that because your growth comes and everything else, then with God willing, you'd have us back here and we'd plan that building for you to handle that, so.
And maybe I, maybe I didn't explain myself well. I mean, that's exactly the thought process I had, is plan it, not necessarily build it at this point in time, until the time comes and it warrants the building of, let's say, an additional banquet facility, an additional building, we'll already have a kitchen set up that will accommodate that particular need, such as you said, so you're looking at it twenty-five or thirty years out, and totally agree with that. And the other side of the coin is, I have zero idea what these types of structures, this type of project would cost. Maybe these guys do, but I don't, and, you know, so you might come in with something and I'd say, oh, yeah, do it all, or you might come back and say, I'm not so sure, I would agree with that.
Well, the, this initial phase that we're talking about right now, while we're sitting here, okay, for the expansion of the kitchen, based on the programming that y'all gave us, that's gonna happen, okay? I mean, it's gotta happen, or you really, I would tell you right now, we need to depart friends, because if you're gonna, we're not gonna give you what you've got or a Band-Aid, I, I'll give you whatever you want, but I don't recommend that. If you're gonna make this investment, we do it right now, and we do it the right way, and we'll put the infrastructure and the utilities, those types of things like Cliff was talking about, you don't necessarily need to buy the extra refrigerator, you don't need to buy, and that's what you're talking about, but we'll have those homes for that. One other area I wanted to address, we only took a quick look at that bar, Wally, okay? And when it comes to bars, I have a lot of personal experience as well as professional experience, okay? And I'm like Cliff, that bar doesn't fit, it doesn't feel right, it doesn't flow, and so we're gonna look at that hard, and maybe relocating it, we talked about that, and, but that's, you know, that's a watering hole, that's a money-making machine. So how we tie that all in, and then I look at it for flow again, the efficiencies for the bartender to move, I agree with the room right off of that, I want to put ice there, which will take the load off the machine the chef's got now, I want to put the bag in the box, all these kinds of things in there, so that she doesn't have to take a lot of steps if she needs something, or he needs, so I concur with everything on that.
Thank you.
Larry, can you?
You answered a lot of my questions right there in the, in that last few minutes, in the size of it, that it will be big enough to accommodate future expansion. I agree with Wally 100%, and that's been a kick of mine for quite a while. I actually think the bar, the length, the bar has run in the wrong direction. I actually think it should be, should be long, north and south, instead of east and west. I think it would be a lot, lot more efficient, but that's, somebody smarter than me needs to do that. One of the things that we definitely need, and we've talked about it in the past, is glassing in that porch, and I think it can be done very economically, and then put a, put a deck out off of it, and we can gain a lot of seating on the, on the, on that screen-end porch and, and then a few outside, so. I think we're all thinking in the same lines, if we can kind of get some figures together and know, know where we're at budget-wise, so we can go to work that way. That's all I have.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on that. I think it's a good idea, and I think all of us here want you to do when you do it for the future, but I can only speak for myself and a few that were on the board when we did this. Our members would like our, our kitchen expanded, so we can offer some more stuff. We also love our chef. Our chef does a good job. We need to give him some place to do. I'm all in favor of, of thinking forward, but I, I've had two priorities in the last year, and that's the expansion of the kitchen and closing in the Lanai. And maybe I'm small-minded, but that's what I'd like done, and I'd like that to be done with a focus on the future, maybe next year or something, but it just, it, I'm kind of, I was even, I was frustrated that the Lanai wasn't even on here. I mean, I don't know how this happens, I really don't, and I'm not going off on you, but, you know, it, we have a, a kitchen expansion that turns into offices, to getting the clubhouse bigger, or the pro shop bigger, and those are all great ideas, but I was just simple-minded, I guess, and, and asking for a kitchen expansion, and, and we really need that. So I'm in favor of doing stuff for the future and thinking ahead, but I really would like to focus on these two initial things that we wanted, and then think about the future and have Jim or anybody else bring it back at a different time, but, and the bar area needs work. I mean, I drink Diet Coke, and I still have a problem with that bar, so. You know, I, I think it needs, it needs hooked up, but I don't know anything about that, I think you guys do, but it's just, I get flustered sometimes, and not with you, but I'd just like to have something get done, and we've talked about this for a year, and Kevin's still cooking in that little thing, and, but, anybody else have any more to say?
Jim, can we clarify something? I don't believe that we're talking about expanding the pro shop, is that correct? We, in your memo, you said we want to create an office space that is secure, because we have a very crowded area where the bookkeeper and handling money and other things, is that correct? We're not looking to expand pro shop space?
Yes, and, you know, they clarified, a lot of it, I think a lot of it is kind of looking at the way you look at a, a separate community center or another banquet center. I think there's a benefit to putting everything on the table. I will say that the Lanai expansion was an oversight, and it's something we talked to Cliff about the first day, but it, so it's always been in the intention, I think, and it was my oversight, basically because I lacked the idea of just, we need this space. You know, it's forty percent of the size of the lounge, and we need the space, but there's really not a definition of what we do with it. With a kitchen, you know, it was obvious of what are your needs, and basically with Lanai, it's really we need the space for seating. And then to expand it, and the, the other reason to me that's kind of very near and dear is that, you know, the membership experience is the number-one thing on a daily basis for us, along with the fiscal, you know, responsibility, and with that building, there's times we don't have enough space for the members, and the Lanai has looked at a separate space. So if you ask someone to sit out there, since it's not air-conditioned, it's kind of the equivalent of saying you're not as important as the other people who are sitting in, you know, air-conditioned space. So to me, for my overall goal and mission relative to the club, the Lanai and the kitchen go together. I mean, both of those are member, you know, member experience and, and guest experience, so that was just an oversight, there was no.
That was my vision as well, the Lanai kitchen, I mean, I called it a clubhouse expansion from the beginning, because the Lanai has been discussed for so many years.
True, I, I forgot, and this is, this is just something simple, but, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Kevin about it, but I've had a, like, fifteen members, and it's kind of crazy, but ask me about a pizza oven, and I think that's kind of stupid, but I, I think they'd sell well, and I think it's something that would improve our business, but in this, if, if he okay, if he's okay with it, I think something ought to be put in there, because that's a big business in this area, but if we, if we can cook a good one, we're gonna have a lot more business.
So you're not the first club, that's kind of happening now throughout the country, we're putting these pizza ovens in, and there's different kinds, and there's different ones, so when we go to the next, to the next step after this, and I, we sit down with the chef and we program the kitchen, and it's based on menu, and if he wants those things, it'll be our job to come back.
Okay.
And give all those options. So we haven't got there yet, I haven't, you know, I've, I've had about ten minutes with the chef, and, but when we really sit down, we're gonna explore all menu items that chef wants and the members want, and then we'll go from there and design to accommodate that. The thing is, is you can, you know, if somebody wants pizza, but there's different equipment out there that cannot, that doesn't just do pizza, does it very well, but can do multiple functions, so.
Yeah.
So we're gonna take all that into consideration, but we'll know.
Okay, I just didn't know.
We'll set it, I understand.
If I would have forgot to say it, and then somebody would have asked me about their pizza, I wouldn't have had an answer.
No, and that, that's great, I think the most important thing here is that the only bad ideas are the ones that aren't presented. You know, it, it's much better that we consider everything and that we can say we considered it, even if it doesn't appear to be a right idea now. A lot of times those ideas, you know, they, they morph into other things that are good. So no, those are, are great ideas, and we don't know going forward, it's like the outside dining, I mean, that's something like the pizza that's really picking up, so is it demanded as much from our current customers as it will be in ten years? The trend's telling us no, that in ten years, outside dining's gonna be double. Now, that can change every day, every trend can, but if you don't look at that and consider Now, that can change every day, every trend can, but if you don't look at that and consider it, you know, you're missing it, you wanna at least say, "Well, we looked at it, but, you know, we didn't have the resources, or we didn't think the time was right," or, like we said, "We have a phase where you can, you know, you prep everything, so that if you decide to expand in that direction," like Mark said, "You're not rebuilding it, you're just adding to it." So at some point, not to cut things off, but I would like to be able to go back to the club without adjourning, and, and bring Chrissy with us, so that everybody can walk through with, with CJ and Cliff, and, 'cause, you know, them explaining it, when you're standing there, and, and CJ's looking at the flow, and explaining, you know, why the hood needs to be relocated, and a lot of things that really, to me, I don't know if you wanna say game changers, but those are things that really let Kevin do it.
Yeah, um, if that can happen, we'd like-
It can happen? I, I would like to talk budget, though, before we leave.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything for the three gentlemen, or four, or five? I, I guess I didn't ask you, Kevin, are you, are you okay with some of this stuff, or do you-
I'm great with it.
Okay. There you go. I think we're great with it, if you're great with it, and, uh, that's, that's what's important. I can't imagine how good you're gonna be when you get something, you know? Go ahead, Tanya.
Any of the supervisors have thoughts on, on budget? What, what they anticipate of spending? I mean, we, we could ask to build a $2 million facility, or we could ask for, I don't know, $500,000. We've, we've thrown around numbers for so long, we really don't know, you know? So, I think you're looking for guidance from us today, on, on what to design.
Let me ask the obvious question, then, in, in your experience in a kitchen, did you ever come up with so much per square foot, an average, or something we can look at? Is it like, when we, I was building federal courthouses, and we figured in $300 a square foot, and we had that number in back of our head, and it usually was, I don't know, a million or two?
Right.
Those are $40 million buildings, we'll go back to that.
That's not a lot, then, but yeah, but, um, I won't be that far off, though, on that case. So let, I can only talk about the kitchen, okay, from my experience, this is our 31st year of doing this. We just completed a project just recently in Lakewood Ranch, Lakewood Ranch Country Club, and we remodeled that whole clubhouse, and would, it all started because of the kitchen, just like what's happening here, but then the clubhouse got remodeled, but the kitchen was the key, and the kitchen, we had to expand the kitchen, because it was antiquated, just like your situation, was designed at the time for something totally different, and they need to be able to do banquets, it's almost the same scenario. We put that project, and basically we gutted it, which is what I'm pretty much thinking from all, most of your stuff here, meaning that it's, I'm looking at as a blank space, and adding on square footage to the back, like I suggested to you, 'cause that's the only way I see where you can go. When you figure the kitchen and the bar, and this is just ballpark, and, you know, we can debate this, and you can say it's way off-base, but I always just tell you how it is, you need to budget, in my opinion, right now, and I already shared this with the gentleman, about $500,000 to $550,000 for just the kitchen. Now, what do you get for that? It's all new equipment, okay, reusing some of your existing equipment, okay, and you don't have a lot, but some of it. That includes delivery on crating, setting in place, sales tax, okay, so, because people give you a budget, and then they, they don't put that in, okay? So I, I add all that in, because those are costs. Um, but it, but that's just the equipment, and the delivery on crating, setting in place, and that also includes reworking that bar, okay, as far as the bar equipment.
Good.
All right? Okay? So that'll give you an idea on the kitchen.
Okay.
Um, can you, can I ask you, uh, I think we talked about it before, but can, can we borrow from ourselves and-
We can.
On this project?
We can, yes.
Okay.
And then the debt service would be paid back from the revenues generated from the club.
Okay.
And green fees and all of it, I mean, all of that is part of the golf fund.
Just for the other guys, there was an article in the paper about a week ago, where Arby's is gonna redo their restaurant, totally redo the kitchen, everything else, and also do the inside dining, so, a little bit along the same lines with you're talking about, and I assume the kitchen would probably be smaller than what we're gonna end up with, but that project was $275,000, so your $550,000 is probably not too far off, I wouldn't guess.
And that's an Arby's.
Yes, see, $550,000 doesn't bother me at all, 'cause that, that was in my mind, uh, and if we-
We'd be mad, but-
Yeah, well, I understand that, and, and also with you doing something with the bar, uh, with, with that, and, and we're not holding you to that, but I, I think that's, see, and that's why I got overwhelmed, because I, I'm thinking about a certain amount of money that we wanna make an impact, and get this done for our members, and our, and the people who live in Sun and Lake, uh, and then I just see this, like, God, there, there we go, there goes, uh, and, and I like going for the future, but I, $550,000, and we, we can even talk more if the, for the lanai.
That's what I was gonna ask, if I contemplate the lanai.
Yeah, I think, I think we oughta get a price for that, too, and, um, if you can, but again, it's, I've heard several ideas, which I like them all, but it, in my mind, it's cost.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I, I think we, uh, wanna be real clear about this, the $500,000 to $550,000 is the equipment in the kitchen, that's not the surround, the build-
Okay.
-to enclose it.
Okay.
So, and, and what we'll do with our design, our initial design, we'll put numbers to what we design, they're estimates, uh, but we'll tell you what we think it's gonna cost.
Okay.
Um, that, at that time, a involvement of a contractor, even though you're not contractually bound to them yet, is invaluable, uh, and I would highly suggest that we do that. And you're upfront with the contractors, doesn't mean you're getting the job, but it gives you an inside to get the job. And if you keep your nose clean, and the numbers are right, and this and that, and we like ya, you know, when we're finished with the drawings, we'll negotiate with you, if you're able to do that. Um, but in regard to the envelope, I would say, and by the way, in closing the lanai, we've done this many times on clubs, those go from the hot area that nobody wants to sit in, to the premier dining areas in clubs. Uh, but in closing an area like that, I would probably look at somewhere around $175,000 to $250,000 a square foot. I would look at the area around the kitchen, you know, that we would build to house the kitchen, probably somewhere around $350,000, or three and a quarter, $350,000 a square foot. Those are numbers off the cuff. My, my thoughts on the program to date, and we're not far into it, I, I think you're, you're around a million dollars for the, for the project, somewhere between a million, a million-two, that's, that's my gut reaction right now.
And that's just for the, the, the two things that we really talked about, and, and if you wanna add the bar?
Yeah, I think the bar would be included in that.
Okay.
And so it'd be the lanai, the kitchen, uh, the bar, office for a secure office area, which I already got a spot, I think, for.
Yeah.
Uh, it's hard not to race ahead, you know, but, uh, yeah, I would take care of the program that we've seen to date, it wouldn't do anything for the future, uh, you know, the variables are things like the grease traps, you know, uh, we're probably gonna end up relocating those.
Yeah.
I'd like to talk to a contractor about what that's gonna take. So, our numbers will get better and better, or more refined, as we go forward, but we're not, we're not shy about it, we'll tell you what we think it's gonna cost, and we try to go on the high side, 'cause the worst thing in the world is to get this thing put together, drawn, and the bids come in, and they're way over budget, we just, it's, uh, not the way to go.
Okay, Tanya? Yeah?
Okay, thank you very much.
Did you get what you wanted?
Yes, I did.
Anything else, guys? Okay, so we don't adjourn, we just-
No, we just didn't leave some sort of notification on the door, that, you know, if anybody comes, that, you know, obviously there's not a lot of public participation right now, but just in case somebody shows up and wonders where we're at, they'll, you know, they'll know, and we'll take Chrissy with us. Obviously, be, you know, try and, try and spend most of your time listening.
You're asking, you're asking us five to do that?
We're gonna need a motion, we're gonna need a motion to recess in a second.
Yeah, we need a motion to recess for a while.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Chrissy, need a roll call on that?
And, I apologize, just one thing, I don't know if I have to ask it now or not, but I just, did everybody get the communication with Henry Deloger's contact for Friday? And I know that, you know, the more we can focus him on what we're looking for, even though he's very knowledgeable, and can, you know, will take the ball on his own, um, if you can avail yourself of talking to him, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We ready? Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Do we need to come in here, then?
Yes.
I don't know why this is hot.
So, the thing we're gonna do, we're gonna, I'm gonna break this up every morning, we're gonna lunch, and I can just let one hole in, and then I'll just pull it like a cheap launch, but what I do is, we walk in there, all you're gonna see, we'll just go out to the TV, or enough to show you, just quick, and, and again, none of this is worked out, we would even program with the chef, none of it, it's just this, oh, I'm sorry.
Just give us a better idea.
And just give you an idea of what the vision is.
She's asking everybody to speak up, so she can catch it on the corner.
Did you catch that?
Oh, I didn't.
Okay, so we're gonna walk through the door, we're gonna make immediate right, we're gonna go out to the back area, where I think is, where I feel where the expansion can be for the kitchen, and we'll just do that, and I'll give you all a, a vision of what we see, and then again, this is all preliminary, without even working through with the chef yet, but I think this is the only way we can go, okay? All right? Okay, so we're gonna go straight here, and that will kill me. Okay, guys, we're gonna make one way through. This is what we've got, right now, and this is what the chef's doing miraculously. This walking goes here, through all the way back, right, gentlemen, so here's what the initial thought is. Watch this grease trap. There'll probably be some utilities in here, but this grease trap is what's gonna be relocated, need to be relocated. But the vision here-
Yeah, that's the grease trap.
Yeah, so there's a grease trap, and for those that don't know what that is, means that when the chef's washing anything that's greased late, before it goes, it goes down the drain, before it goes into the sewer, it goes through these traps, they're like giant septic tanks, and then the grease is caught, and the grease settles, and then the clean water, or the dirty water, goes through the sewer. The grease went through, it clogged up the sewers in the city, and it'd be a lawsuit.
It has to be pumped out periodically.
These are lids that lift up, and it gets pumped out by a truck that comes with a hose, okay, like a septic tank.
There's probably two tanks here, with two access panels, we think, uh, in each tank.
Probably 1,100 pounds of these, probably.
Oh, really?
Yeah, 1,100 pounds, and it's parts that pass her down.
So you can put these anywhere.
They can go anywhere.
As long as they're in line to the sewer line.
Correct. Okay, okay. So, this is the vision initially, is we would expand out this way, basically from this wall to right here, up, I don't have a key. I'm assuming, the chef's got a key. I'm sorry, from this wall over here? Yeah, so if you look at that wall, which, if they're retaining wall, or blocking everything, the kitchen stops where that gutter is, right there, that's the end of the building, that's the kitchen. Now I wanna expand out, using that wall, adjusting this, coming through here. This is the, this is the main water here for the entire building, okay? So, in fairness to Cliff, I don't wanna relocate that, okay, and you guys, so what I would suggest we do is, we will expand from there, all the way across, another which will be a wall here, and then an access to get into this water heater for service, from the outside or from in here. But our kitchen, when in essence, it's right here, is that walk-in, then you walk by that set Arctic, that's the back of it, okay? So I wanna go ahead and blow these walls out, this wall, which is not structural, we don't think, and expand the kitchen all the way from there to here, which I believe in, I don't have it on paper yet, or on computer, but I believe will give us a good-sized prep area for banquet, banquets aligned, and I'll talk about the food in a second, pantry, cold pantry, sandwiches, and also an a la carte line, which is everything that's in the programming that we want. Chef, jump in here if I'm off-base on anything, I want you to be here all day. Now this, how that all lays out is different, but then, think about this, if the kitchen now becomes rectangular, remember what it was, instead of just where it dies on that hood, we will change the whole flow of the kitchen. It always starts from receiving, kitchen works from receiving, to storage, to preparation, to production, to distribution, back to dishwashing. We have to have the dishwashing center located, handle the banquet, and also handle a la carte at the same time. Right now, you basically have no dishwashing, you have a, some, but then, now by having this giant rectangle, we will change, I'm thinking in my mind, to change the flow, so the hoods are gonna run longways-
Okay.
...and be island-style, so I can have banquet on the back for the chef, a la carte on the front, so it's a double hood, okay, and they don't interfere with each other, and prep on that side, and prep on this side, and then cold pantry. And then, and then, then around that perimeter from the receiving will be walk-ins and storage. If we can relocate anything in the walk-ins, because those are erector sets, they come down like panels, I'm gonna reuse, that box is only three years old, maybe we can use it, maybe we can't, I don't know. We can also give you avenues to sell it, if you need to do that, but, but this is where I see the expansion for the club to be, for the kitchen. What that does is, if, if everything's working this way, when the servers are picking up, they're picking up for their banquet, 'cause I'll have a banquet set up, and they'll go out to the banquet, they'll pick up for a la carte, and go to a la carte, so they don't cross-
Up the other door.
The other doors. Those doors may change, too, don't have that all worked out yet, but this is where I see expansion, and then the rest is programming with Chef Kevin, how it all flows, and once we get on paper, and what equipment we need based on menu, and everything else. Now, there was a question raised in the meeting this morning, that obviously, if the chef has a better kitchen with different equipment, he can do more menu items for your guests. That's absolutely true, he's unlimited to what he can do now, but with, with this new kitchen, he can do a myriad of it, he can be creative, like he is, and that's what we're gonna give him, and therefore, everybody wins on that. So, so this is how I see initially the growth, it's the only place I think you can go, it still ties in good for trash removal, to the dumpsters, and also for receiving, 'cause this would be, somewhere in here will be the receiving door, and then we'll build from receiving, to storage, to preparation, to production, to distribution.
Jim, uh, where is the bar, the one we have over here?
The service bar is right there.
Right here, is that, is that something that we, I mean, I've been here like three years, I don't see it being used, is that something that we could do without?
So I have the vision for your bar, Jim, okay? Now, just, this is just a vision, you may not like it, but let's just think about that. That's a service station, a server station, we're gonna create new server stations, okay? Like your bar, you know, your main bar?
Yeah.
It's over there, and you know your dividing wall? When you have a banquet, right, usually, if it's a wedding or something, you need to be able to get alcohol to those people, right, without it interfering with the deal. If we were to take that bar, not that particular bar, but if we were to take that bar and turn it, so it's running the way, I think you said, and I was to be able to divide the bar, so that one half could service the banquet room, and one half could service the dining room.
Through the wall.
Through the wall.
Direct.
Direct, I got, I can, and I set it up for two, two or three stations, then I've got all the service in that one area, right? I've got everything I need there, and I'm not interfering with the banquet to the a la carte.
So we, we, that would be done away with, the senior?
No, I'm gonna incorporate it into the kitchen, and make it, and use it as valuable-
As a kitchen, okay, very good. Something, 'cause it's just not used much.
We, I want that space.
Very good, right.
Valuable space.
Yes, that's why I, I wanted to see if it was needed, because-
I need it.
Yeah.
I need, I need that water heater, but I'll upset Cliff at my taste, so I can't do it.
I meant, if, I know it's, the space is needed, that's why I asked, because I know, we just don't use it that much, and, so that's good, I'm glad you thought of it.
We need these batteries back here, too, for a better facility. We need these racks, we expect there to be a further facility. But I don't think, again, once we get it on paper and we draw it and we start programming, well, we program with the chef, and we start laying it out, I think we'll have enough room. We'll improve our efficiency of scale, but, you know, I just... But this is only where I know to expand. And I think it's good. Storage is huge.
And the building out there is great.
And a lot of the stuff that goes for banquets and other things, because again, you know what you need. We can move out there, but glass storage and setup and things for a la carte, we need to have off the kitchen, but not in the kitchen, but off the kitchen or somewhere round that's out of the way of the kitchen. That's just, real quick.
You want to go to the bar, the high area?
Yeah. Sure.
It's exciting, though.
Just to follow up on the email, this is the situation, and probably CJ might know, we do... A lot of our banquets are smaller. And right now, one of the problems is if it's a banquet that requires quiet. So, the hospital is one of our bigger clients. They might only have 20 people for a breakfast, but it's an educational thing, and we end up dedicating the whole room to it because we don't have a way to really divide it. We have some, you know, some dividers we did, but they're, you know, they're not what we'd like, but they work for now. But, I mean, this is kind of ideal in a way, but just so it's out there, that's something that really help us, because when we do just have that wall, it gets pretty tight. We can't create the experience we want. Now, I'm sure in closing the lanai will alleviate that to some point, but just as a thought.
A lot of the things that we're going to do here, we're going to treat like a hotel, you know, service end of it, and definitely dividing walls here, you know, retractable ones would be something I'd do in a heartbeat. It'd be nice if we had three of these sections so we could get two in here, because I think that's about the size you're looking at. And I don't know, we'd have to see if re-confining the ceiling and everything to accommodate that's worth it or not. But yeah, anytime we can facilitate you having more activities going on at the same time is one of the big key parts of what we do.
Thanks.
Something like that could ever be paid for? And then if you do that, break that up? The cost for something, they're breaking the room up? I mean, the cost, what it would cost to have it done?
What it would cost to put those in?
To fix.
I'd say, you know, we have to relocate some doors. I mean, I'd look at it a little more.
That's what I'm afraid of. It's going to be... It'd be... I think if you did it at a separate cost of what that would cost so we could have it separate, might be better.
No problem at all. We can itemize that.
Because how can you do it, but man, what it would cost to recoup or invest in? Jim's got to sell a lot of banquets.
I think it's great. Mine is different, though. There you go, Chrissy. You need to be upfront.
Thank you.
Block champion, you know, and it's just in long location. You know, turning it this way so that we can connect correctly at the bar.
Great idea.
It's a piece of cake.
That's a great idea.
I don't want the banquet people seeing that, putting the bar running it this way and then being able to do a function. And you can make it as long as you want, become much better than where it is, and it fits perfect like this.
My son said, well, structurally, the office wall, where all of these three doors are, we'll look at. You know, structure, since you're a construction guy. If you could load those gap open area around, doors. Periodically, you've got a structural column that's holding out the outdoor there. Not a lot of loading, really. And all of your structure is actually coming down there and coming down on a beam probably across there. I'm guessing it's some of this, but my point is, is that I can open that up a lot, you know, to be able to get, like I was saying, you may want to have folding doors at this area and on the outside.
I mean, that would get you a tremendous amount of square footage. You knock that, if you can knock those, that whole section out, even if there's columns there, support columns, a couple, it's not going to be here.
You can control them out, you know, and things like that. But, I mean, just think, just think if that was open from here to there and that was conditioned space. I mean, I guess this is 40% of what you've got floor space. You just increased your... And look out there now, nobody's out there.
No.
You know? You can extend your shoulder periods of season by months. This is a difficult bar, walking on one end and the other.
I'm happy for I was even a member here, this is a rare...
I'm sorry?
Before I even joined here, back when I got down and see if someone to live here, I thought, what is that like that? And then I started hearing about things.
I don't know what they're thinking, but I mean, that's your big view, you know, to the lake and outside and everything. If you're sitting down here, you don't have to send any of that, you know, to me.
You got the back of the lake over there.
Yeah. And one people, 25 seats. You know, that's a lot of revenue.
Yeah. That's walking a little bit. I had so many from half of them that year. That's a...
Yeah.
And I want to be able to keep the backup later and some other stuff as well. You got a whole bunch of things that we just improved them. Man, it's a different world. There's a lot of square footage here.
What's nice about this is the depth. You can get double seating in here, still keep the fire commercial happy, you know, with the egress and so forth. I mean, you've got a lot of opportunities here for six tops, eight tops, four tops, you know? It's big, and so many times we get a porch like from here to there, you know, to work with, and I'm like, well, makes a nice hallway. But now, this one is, and it's good ceiling height, structure's there. It's a no-brainer. I think more what is interesting is going to be, what do we do out here? You know, having just outdoor seating doesn't work. You really need to have covered seating. I mean, some just open is okay, but for the most part, it has to be covered to some extent. So, we want to make sure that we don't hurt the look of the club by putting a roof over that. That's what I was getting at. A lot of times in country clubs, we'll use an approach like up north where, you know, they use the plastic vinyl, you know, to extend. It's that look, you know, whether it's even awnings, you know, can do that for you. Obviously, awnings are very golf-oriented.
Are you recommending to keep these walls? Because the bar knows how the issues that were mentioned. The seats are too close to the wall, the bar backs are facing the lake.
That way.
Which is horrible design anyway.
Right.
These walls are going to stay intact in.
I think what we're initially thinking of, Tanya, is taking the bar, turning it this way, make the connection between your facility and the other, and the a la carte here. These walls, we'd have to look and see what's inside and how your structure is up there. I don't want to go and just tear the whole thing out, you know, and find out we got to put steel beams in and a lot of other things. I think we can... I'm pretty sure we can easily make it maybe open for two bays and then two bays or whatever that is. But I think it needs to be completely open.
We have a dark clip, but these columns are probably lined up, so it would be open about that big, probably three bays.
Yeah. But our goal would be to open it up as much as possible. Whether we have doors here and here remains to be seen. You know, that's... I'm just thinking that might be a possibility, because you might have a function going on out here and another function going on in there, and you want to be able to sound-wise close it off. I would think it'd make more sense to keep this as a small meeting room and keep these walls here so you can have a group of 30 or 40 or 50 people on here versus starting to put walls and dividing the big room up. I think you're better off putting your money out here and keeping this as a premium area versus just opening it up and make it part of the rest of the room.
Good point, good point. So, how do you put the bar in here? This way.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
Well, I'd like to...
You have to have a big door down there to get to it. I think it's critical for that bar to turn and then make a connection so they can directly serve for the waitresses and waiters to pick up alcohol right there, not have to come into the bar or come around the bar or anything else, but also separate it so if there's a function going on in there and one in here, they're not looking through it or hearing it, you know, as much as possible.
And I'd have the pickups, I'd have the pickup area for out here on this end, obviously, and then I'd have the same thing on the other side for the other, for the banquet room, okay? Or am I doing one on one side and one on the other for the server pickup? And what I do there is I'll make the server pickup a double server pickup, so we wouldn't have stools on that side where the server is, but you could put two servers there so when you really slam, they're both there and there's a point of sale there and everything's good. And because those are dead spots anyway, your back's out here to this way, so that's a perfect server pickup area. And put your seating on the opposite way where they got the view.
Yeah. Got good ideas, you guys cost a lot of money.
Not all good ideas cost a lot of money. I learned that a long time ago. Bad ideas cost a real lot of money.
We've been there, too. Probably. I will say, everybody, that just, you know, first glances, you know, it's... This lends itself to what we're talking about, you know? It's... We're not getting into a lot of messy structure and oddball-type things, you know? I think you just need more space, is what it is.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Well, I just said, I don't wish to back them on mine, whatever we do, do that lakes there. You know, we got to get people seeing on that. I wonder as well. You know, if we do that, then we go and clean it up. Who was looking at it?
That was such a huge selling point, right? Even on a day like today, was it 90 out or something already? Great, man, you know? Anyway, I mean, put the air conditioning in, yeah?
Shame it's not cocktail time. I'm wearing it. That it, everybody? Great.
If that's it, we can adjourn the meeting.